Good evening and welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight for this public hearing. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. Just going to be helping to moderate the public hearing tonight, which is a hearing for an Eagle permit application for Gretchen railing. Michigan Electric Transmission Company for Greendale, Warren, Geneva Township, Midland County. Before we get started though, I just have a couple of things to go through. Logistically speaking, I'm just going to go through a quick introduction. That's what we're doing right now. We're going to talk about the other ways to submit an official comment. Then we're going to go through the official hearing portion, and that's where you're going to have an opportunity to make a statement. For the record on this application and project. And then who to contact for further questions. The applicant was given an opportunity to present the project and take questions, but declined. All right, all lines, just a couple of more logistical things. All lines are going to be muted during the hearing. Well, obviously unmute you and give you an opportunity to make your statement when the time comes, and we'll talk about how we're going to do that here in a little bit. And I should mention even those who are on the phone will be able to make a statement tonight. And everybody will have that opportunity. You can, even though we're not having a question answer session tonight, you can submit questions about the hearing or any logistics. Things of that nature using the Q and A box in your Zoom toolbar at the bottom. And then we are recording this hearing, so recording it and the hearing will be posted on our YouTube channel in a few days here. And so with that, I would like to invite our Water Resources Division staff to unmute their cameras and mics and please introduce themselves.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Rudolph. I am the hearings officer for this evening's public hearing. And I'm the Bay City District Office District Supervisor for Water Resource Division.
Thank you everyone for coming. My name is Jacob Brand. I am the EQA and the primary processor on this application. I'm looking at both part 301 and part 303 impacts. So inland lakes and streams and the wetlands protection.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Blodgett, and I'm the Bay City District Flood Plan Engineer, and I'll be reviewing. Any impacts under part 31 floodplain authority.
All right. Thank you all for those introductions and being with us here as part of the hearing tonight. As we talked about in the agenda, I'm going to go through quickly other ways to submit official, an official comment in case you don't want to make a statement tonight verbally. There are a couple of other ways you can do that. You can do that through my Enviro portal. And that can be done, and we're going to put the link for this in the chat. So you should be seeing it pop up in the chat. That's submission HPH SRN5 VP NPS is the submission number for that. Or you can do that by mail as well. You can submit written comments by mail. And I'm going to read this out loud for those who are calling in tonight. It looks like we have some call in, some callers. Unless you're going to send those comments to Eagle, E G L E, Water Resources Division. At the Bay City District Office. And that's 401 Ketchum Street, K E T C H U M, Suite B. And that's Bay City, Michigan, 48708. And the comment period after the public hearing tonight will be open for 10 days. So that'll be until December 12th, 2022. Comments will be accepted. And so with that, we're going to move on to the actual hearing portion tonight. And I'd like to invite Brian Rudolph, our hearings officer, to read the opening statement.
Thank you, Ryan. I will be reading a fairly lengthy opening statement that describes some of the procedures and some additional background. I appreciate your patience while I go through this. As I said, my name is Brian Rudolph, and I am the District Supervisor for the Water Resource Division in the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy. And I am serving as a hearing officer for the public hearing on Eagle's submission number HPH dash SRN5 dash VP NPS. As we've just seen with me tonight is Jacob Brandon and Katie Blodgett. They are the reviewers for this file. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I'll begin with some background information about why we were here. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing, how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe. What will happen after tonight's hearing? It will then be time for you to provide comments. Then we'll spend the majority of the time tonight listening to those comments. And at the end of the hearing, I will read a closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resource Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs that help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks. And building in a designated critical sand dune area well under floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resource and Environmental Protection Act of 1994, Public Act 451 as amended. We are here tonight because Gretchen railing, Michigan Electric Transmission Company has proposed the following. To impact 0.044 acres of emergent well and to construct 41 of the proposed 101 electrical transmission structures. Construct three temporary, three temporary clear spam bridges, excuse me. The applicant proposes to convert 19.3 acres of forested and 10.42 acres of scrub shrub wetlands to emergent well on. The purpose of this public hearing is as follows. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activity described in the public notice meets certain criteria. Set by part 301 inland lakes and streams and part 303 wetlands protection of PA 451. From my Enviro portal and or public notice of Act 451. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the streams and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permit, under the provisions of part 301 inland lakes and streams. Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by section 30106 of part 301. The department shall issue a permit if it finds the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or riparian rights. The department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of part 303. Wetlands protection of Public Act 451 Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by section 30311 of part 303. A permit for an activity listed in section 30304 shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest. That the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity. And that the activity is otherwise lawful. One, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Two, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. A, the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in wetlands. And B, a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the METC company. Product proposed project, an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making a decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision. On whether or not there is widespread support or opposition to the project. In just a moment, I'll outline the procedures again we'll use for taking your comments, but before I do so, I have to mention that the pub, the notice of this hearing. Was published in the Midland Daily News on November 21st. As we discussed at the beginning of the informational session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar. To ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. First, the applicant and/or their consultant, as with Brian had said. Decline the opportunity to present the project and take questions and answers. Therefore, we're moving directly to the hearing portion. In the hearing portion, we will call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we will call on those that have raised their hand in the Zoom toolbar. That they would like to make a comment, and if they haven't already been called upon. And I believe as Ryan said, for those who are on the phone. There is an opportunity to comment as well. As also as a reminder on that note, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, please follow the directions of the moderator, Ryan. On how to identify that you would like to make a comment. And you may also, as previously stated, submit your comments to Eagle through the my Enviro portal via email or US mail. When all the comments have been completed, we will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. And as you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given three minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have a minute left. And please begin to wrap up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, we will indicate that your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle's staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to provide. Your comments on the proposed project and listen to those comments. How will this information be used? This hearing, as previously said, is being recorded. And your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for the public hearing is open for 10 days from the date of this hearing ending on 12/11/2022. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the 10 day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the proposed project. As proposed, or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle my Enviro portal website. And searching for the application number HPH dash SRN5 dash VP NPS. Thank you for your patience and your attention. And we'll begin calling the names of those who've indicated they'd like to make a statement.
All right. Many thanks for reading that, Brian. Just a couple of things to, I guess, reiterate and add. As Brian said, we have a list of names during registration. If you indicated you wanted to make a comment, we're going to start with those. I have 13 people on the list. We'll get through those 13 people first, and then anybody with their hand raised can also make a comment, comment. So if you are in the audience and you're not called on when from, from the registration list, you can just select the raised hand icon. If you are on the phone, you just need to select pound two on your receiver, and that will raise your hand in Zoom. And then we will call on you in turn. Everyone have three minutes. I'll give you a heads up when you are at two. So when you have one minute left, just so you know where your time is. I will, for the people on the list, I'll identify who is up first and then who's on up next, just so that you know. That you'll be providing your comment next. And then also, you know, please identify your name and any. Organization you're affiliated with. If there is one comment per person, if there is more than one person on the line who would like to make a comment, just let me know that. When you're making your comment and we can take each person's comment. So with that, our first person that we have up is Jeff Jox. And then after Jeff is going to be Barb Rogers. So what will happen is Jeff, we will unmute you on our end. And then you can unmute yourself. It looks like you're already unmuted, and then you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Again, Jeff Jox, I represent, I'm the attorney who represents the Wildlife Recovery Association. We're asking you to deny METC's wetland permit because it has failed to demonstrate that it has no feasible and prudent alternatives. And because it does have other feasible and prudent alternatives. The specific area I'm going to be talking about is the Wildlife Recovery Association property. And the wetland complex on that property and the surrounding properties. This is located approximately three quarters of a mile south of M20 along Coleman Road. The wetland is a very diverse in wetland, and it's got a significant amount of avian and herpetile wildlife, including species such as bald eagles. Red-shouldered hawks, northern goshawks, peregrine falcons, least bitters, American bitters, common night hawks, black turns, trumpor swans, marsh friends. Red-headed woodpeckers, black billed cuckoos, as well as blending turtles and wood turtles. METC's proposed transmission line will be placed perpendicular to the regular flight paths of the birds that use this wetland complex. And these birds regularly travel between both sides of the complex and the. Coleman Road divides the complex and the power line will go right along Coleman Road, which will therefore divide the wetland complex. MTC also wishes to convert a significant amount of the wetland to a different type, which, which is going to impact the herpetile species. Our written comments that we provided relied upon, for the most part, the Avian Power Line Committee's publication titled Reducing Avian Collisions with Power Lines. And we did that because METC has indicated that it relies upon the committees, this committee's guidelines and documents. To get into the meat here, METC knows that its transmission lines will result in collisions and electrocutions of birds in this wetland complex. The committee's publication, the Avian Power Line Committee's publication plainly states.
One minute left, Jeff.
Okay, thanks. Plainly states that transmission lines kill and injure birds. And diverters only reduce mortality by 9.6%, but. The feasible and prudent alternatives analysis here completely failed. They didn't show that, that demonstrate no feasible and prudent alternatives exist. The analysis itself is that they provided through Burns and McDonald is completely lacking. The analysis chose the route that they, they've taken. By virtue of, in part, the amount of wetlands it'll go through, and it said 14.8 acres of wetland. The application now has 40 acres of wetland impacted. The analysis that Burns and McDonald did is completely unreliable. You cannot rely, rely on it. It's got a material defect. In addition, the analysis didn't compare wetland quality, species, or anything in its determination. So it could be a very poor wetland that they've chosen to avoid and go through this incredibly diverse wetland.
You're at, you're at time, Jeff, so please wrap up your comments.
Thanks. In addition, there are other feasible and prudent alternatives demonstrated on their route analysis, and there's an unused power line easement just west of Coleman Road. So. To conclude, you know, we just asked that you deny this because of this massive failure in feasible and prudent alternatives analysis and massively. Or in the, in the, the failure to demonstrate that there are no feasible and prudent alternatives. They failed that and that.
Yeah, we're going to have to move on here.
Thank you.
The next person. Yep. Thanks for your comment, though.
Thank you.
All right. So next up. Is Barb Rogers and followed by Barb is James Gillingham. So Barb, we're going to find you in the audience here and unmute you.
Hey, Ryan, there's not a Barb Rogers in the.
No, Barb, okay.
But I can unmute the next one. Hold on.
James Gillingham, and then after James will be Brian Knopf. All right. Okay. Were you able to find James?
Yep, should be able to unmute.
All right, there you are.
Now, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, I'm a biology professor emeritus at Central Michigan University. The continued decline in worldwide biodiversity is all too well documented, and as a part of this, turtles are currently considered to be the most threatened vertebrate group. A substantial proportion of the proposed METC new line project land area is wetland, which supports populations of blanding turtle. With densities as high as 18 individuals per acre. This turtle is a medium sized species with a high vaulted, slightly speckled upper shell and. Bright yellow chin and throat. Blading's turtle is considered an indicator species for high quality nutrient rich wetlands. It is classified as a special concern species in Michigan, is considered threatened in Ohio and Ontario, and is endangered in Indiana and Illinois. Due to this turtle's declining status, it has been the center of several head starting programs here in the state of Michigan. These programs hatch turtle eggs in captivity, raise the hatchlings to a size less vulnerable to predators, and then release them into the wilds. A good proportion of the wetlands delineated in this proposed line project are characterized as shrimp swamp wetland habitat. Such habitat is seasonally flooded with shallow water and is vegetated with alder, willow, dogwood, elderberry, and other woody plant species. Unlike other turtles in Michigan, blanding turtles prefer and are specifically attracted to this shrimp swamp habitat. For spring courtship and mating behavior as opposed to open water pond or lake habitat. Blanding's turtle courtship takes place at or near the water's surface, potentially making them more visible to predators. The presence of shrubby vegetation provides a canopy that affords them protection from potential predators during mating. Damage or destruction of blanding's turtle shrimp swamp habitat. At worst, would prevent its annual reproduction and at best force its movement elsewhere to less suitable habitat. The latter could lead to a disruption of the competitive equilibrium of the remaining population. Like sea turtles and tortoises, blanding turtles exhibit tremendous longevity, 75 years or more. But require high juvenile survivorship in order to maintain a stable population. Interference with their ability to successfully reproduce would lead to ultimate loss of blending turtle population density. Wetlands, no matter how small, are important. Construction of this high line will surely result in just another piece of wetland habitat lost to an already declining species. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, James.
You're welcome.
All right. So next up is Brian Knopf. And before we get to Brian here, just a heads up, we have a lot of phoning callers. If you're on the phone and we call your name, please select pound two. And that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we can call on you at that time, and we'll know it's you. All right. So Brian, it looks like you're unmuted. You can begin when you're ready. Are you there, Brian? It looks like you are unmuted on our end. And you're unmuted on your, on your end, but we cannot hear you. So it's what we'll do here is we will go on to the next person that will come back to you. See if you got whatever technical issues figured out that you might be having. All right. So after Brian. And we'll come back to you, Nancy Seefelt, and then, and then we'll come back to Brian after Nancy.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Nancy. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Seefelt. I am a current faculty member at Central Michigan University, a longtime supporter of the Wildlife Recovery Association. And really much a concerned citizen. My expertise in this, in ecology and evolutionary biology with a specific expertise in avian ecology. I have a really broad research background in birds in many, many habitats, including those birds that live in wetlands. And for the most part, I'm fairly well read on the recent literature about the power lines issues and wildlife. In all in all, transmission lines are really known to do a lot of damage to wetlands and also to habitats. And when it comes to mortality to birds, it's extremely high. It's estimated as many as 64 million birds are killed each year in the US alone by being either colliding with. With power lines or through electrocution. And that's from like 2014, so that number might be a little out of date. Birds that are often affected include large body birds, including wetland species, herons, egrets, cranes, swans, and other waterfall. Raptors are another group of birds that are usually highly impacted. Eagles are a special concern. Especially when they are breeding and feeding young because they become much, much more vulnerable to. Lines because of their flight patterns that change. In terms of small birds, the death toll is really likely unknown. And that's because many of the birds are migrating at night and no one is really paying attention or being able to truly monitor the collisions that they have. So really understanding that we do need to have infrastructure for power integrity. It's also really important to understand that we need to make sure that those transmission lines are not going to do damage. In the other side, you also have to remember that collisions that wildlife might have with power lines could also. Damage the power lines and cause issues with power reliability for the people that need it. So all in all, when you look at.
One minute left.
Recent studies, they show that wetlands and river valleys are really the ones that are greatest potential for mortality of birds. And when it comes down to it, the best mitigation shows that you should reroute lines to avoid those types of sensitive habitats. And for this current project, that is actually feasible. In my own experience, I have seen thousands of birds crossing the wetlands in less than a few hours. And really, as a steward of the earth, as a scientist and a citizen, I ask that you deny. Any permit that would allow for construction of transmission lines through this wetland property. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment, Nancy. All right, we're going to go back to Brian. Brian, you are unmuted on our end. Are you able to unmute yourself and provide your comment? Brian, nope. All right, I've got. That's. Brian is here, obviously. Are you there? Hey, Brian, if you can hear us, you might want to try calling in via the call in number. And see if that works better for you, but we're not hearing anything on your end. So we're going to, we're going to have to move on. All right. So next up. Is Timothy Kaufman, and then after Timothy is Barb Curtis. All right, Timothy, you are unmuted on our end. Feel free to unmute yourself and make your comment when you're ready.
Okay, are you able to hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello. Thank you for taking my comment tonight regarding Wildlife Recovery Association's Little Swamp Sanctuary. And the proposed power line project. My name is Dr. Timothy Kaufman. I'm an emergency room physician at Covenant in Saginaw, and I'm also on the Board of Directors of Wildlife Recovery Association. I've known Joe and Barb Rogers out there for approximately 15 years. I've visited and done a lot of wildlife photography many times on the Little Swamp Sanctuary. And I wanted to speak briefly about how important I think it is to protect the association's wetland and wetland habitat there. These lands are part of a unique ecosystem here in central Michigan, and it needs to be protected. These lands are the nesting grounds for bald eagles, home to hundreds of other species of birds, including redheaded woodpeckers. Tundra swans, merguez, ospreys, heron, geese, and also home to rare turtle species that have been mentioned, blending turtles and wood turtles. And over the years, I think upwards of 140 species of birds have been witnessed on the Little Swamp Sanctuary. Which Wildlife Recovery has supported for over 50 years. I wanted to attest tonight to the fact that my wife and I personally participated in a bird count. On the Little Swamp Sanctuary about six weeks ago on the evening of October 11th. And we counted 1,000 birds in two hours between 5:40 and 7:40 PM. Crossing the proposed route for the electric lines. Those are real numbers, 1,000 birds in two hours. I understand that feasible alternative routes are available for these power lines. Including what I understand is an easement just west of the Little Swamp Sanctuary that might be a better option. And I would ask that the permit to place these power transmission lines be denied by Eagle. Please listen to the people of the state of Michigan. We don't want to see these wetlands injured by this power line project.
Yeah, one minute, Timothy.
Some 50,000 people have signed a petition to help save these wetlands, and we're asking you to do the right thing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Now, thank you for your comment. All right. It sounds like there was a request to go back to Barb Rogers, who may be on the phone. Barb, if you're on the phone. Can you raise your hand? It looks like phoning caller 5521 is unmuted. Who's? Are you there, caller?
Yes, that's Barb Curtis. So I'll go ahead and talk since you got me.
Okay, gotcha. And actually, you're up.
I know. That's why I did that.
Okay.
I was also out at the intersection of Coleman Road and Wildlife Recovery's driveway on October 23rd on Sunday. We counted seventy-seven ducks, fifteen groups, eight hundred and seventy-seven small birds, anywhere between one to ninety in a group, um, seven hundred and twenty-two geese, forty-two groups, seventy-eight sandhill cranes, a bunch of bats, a hawk, and a woodcock. And those birds those birds that go across from west to east at night will go back again in the morning. So that's double that number that are going across. And if you ever set up a project and once you're completed it, you've looked and thought you wished you were to move the fridge closer to the counter or turn the table saw in the shop the other direction, this is the chance we've got to reroute this power line to an alternate path and not have it bisect this wetlands. And it makes a lot of sense, but you can't do it later. You can only do it now. And I have just lived through two years of being in a wind park. And I've watched them put in the roads through open fields, through the windmills, the transmission lines underground, and it doesn't return to what it was. And this is just plain old open farmland. And I think this is a chance to protect the habitat and make some good decisions. And I'm hoping we take it and look for the reroute and see if that is feasible and if it will do less harm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, after Barb is Jamie Kuhn. And then after Jamie is Jerry Prufender. Prunder, Prunder. Uh, Jamie, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, I am Dr. Jamie Kuhn. I'm an assistant professor of biology at Arlem College. My PhD is in habitat restoration that benefits wildlife. Uh, I have a particular interest in birds. And part of the reason I have that particular interest in birds is while I was getting my undergraduate degree at Central Michigan University, I lived and worked full-time as an intern at the Wildlife Recovery Association. So the decision to be made here, um, has to be in the interest of public trust, including navigation, fish, wildlife, and pollution. And given my expertise in wildlife conservation and the fact that I lived at the sanctuary, I think I can provide some, uh, useful observations. So the first is that based in the scientific literature, I think this would be an unacceptable disruption to aquatic wildlife due to the high voltage lines. The scientific literature is very clear that when building these lines, you need to avoid areas with high concentrations of sensitive species. Um, this is including the wetland sanctuary. Uh, there was a recent review done by Beazodo and Kindle in twenty eighteen, looked at over two hundred studies and found the negative consequences for biodiversity with these types of lines, begins in the construction phase but lasts all the way through operation. Um, this brings me to my second important observation. Given that I lived on site, I can confirm that this wetland sanctuary is really unique. It is teeming with birds and other wildlife, over a hundred and forty species of birds. It is one of the most high-quality wetland habitats I experienced in the area. It is very high biodiversity, high abundance. But it also serves rare and sensitive species, including the Blanding's turtles, but also at least thirteen species of birds that are listed as species of greatest conservation need in Michigan, um, and some other species that I'm very worried about. Um, so high biodiversity, high abundance, but also some culturally important species like wood ducks, bald eagles, and others. My final observation is that we, the biodiversity is really well established. Others have talked about it. But there's another ecosystem service here that should be protected, and that's education. Students from nearby high schools and universities gain practical skills needed to gain employment in fields related to biodiversity.
One minute left.
While spending time in this rare, high-value wetland, and this includes myself. Being, given that I'm a former intern that lived and worked at the sanctuary, having this easy access to a high-quality biodiverse wetland habitat so close to my college was critical in my development as a scientist. This is why I went on to pursue my PhD and contribute to conservation, and now I teach others the same. And this was all possible because of access to this wetland. Uh, so I am hopeful that my comments are persuasive in not issuing a permit. Wetlands are a historic but threatened component of Michigan's cultural landscape. And so I urge you to consider alternative routes for this reason. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, um, before we move on to the next person, we have Jerry Fruehender, and then after Jerry is Dennis Buddha. Uh, and again, for those of you on the phone, if we call your name, uh, and you're on the phone, select pound two on your receiver and it'll raise your hand so that we know, um, that you're on the phone. So with that, Jerry, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself, uh, and begin when you're ready. All right, are you there, Jerry? You just, um, in order to unmute, you need to select a microphone icon in the lower left-hand part of your screen. And then if you select that, it will turn off your microphone, and then you'll be able to make a statement. Again, if, if you're having technical issues, I put the, uh, phone in number in the chat, so you can also dial in by phone uh, and make your statement, uh, a little bit later on. Okay. So with that, we'll come back to Jerry next to see if, uh, he's able to get his issues worked out. Uh, Dennis Buddha, Dennis, you are unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Dr. Dennis Buddha, manager of the Isabella Wind Park for DTE in Rosebush, Michigan. As, as we all know, DTE and the whole United States is going after carbon reduction, reducing your carbon footprint, and the great state of Michigan and DTE are no different. DTE is reducing their carbon footprint, uh, by ninety percent by the year twenty forty. And we are very much involved with bringing the state reliable renewable energy. And Isabella Wind Park does just that. Our partner of ITC and Metsi, which transports our renewable energy via their transmission lines to homes and businesses throughout the great state, is critical to keep business in Michigan and keep Michigan prosperous. We will be investing over nine billion dollars over the next ten years in the renewable sector. And ITC and Metsi is critical, a critical partnership to that. DTE stands with ITC, and please, please approve this permit so we can keep this state viable, strong, and financially, uh, strong as we continue into the next generations. Sir, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, it looks like we have another login for, for Jerry. Jerry, we're gonna unmute you. Uh, you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Okay.
All right, we're getting an echo, so you might want to turn off if you have Okay.
This is Jerry Frander. And I am a resident of Midland County.
Jerry, we can hardly hear you. You might have turned the wrong mic off.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's better.
This okay? All right. This is Jerry Frunder, and I'm a lifelong resident of Midland County. Um, I've enjoyed the county's abundant underdeveloped areas or undeveloped areas, and I've seen how the development has spread. And I want to see this wetland preserved. I'm a registered nurse with a master's degree. I also have a degree in chemistry. And was originally a veterinary technician, so I love health, life, and animals. And these animals, we are need, needing our protection. The wetlands being, are being destroyed all over the world. And once they're gone, they're rarely restored. When they are converted, as, as in the, uh, proposal that you're reviewing, they're never the same. They're never as good as the original. Similarly, if you get replacement car, car parts, they're never as good as the original. Um, these wetlands are critical to the survival of a threatened species and our entire world. And as long as we have a feasible and reasonable alternate location for M E T C's electrical transmission lines, I feel it is our job as stewards of the world to use that alternative site. Um, we don't always have that option, but if we have that now, I think it's to the advantage of everyone in this area and the animals that are threatened, that we take advantage of the alternate options when they're present. If we don't, we're not being respectful stewards of the land in this county and all its creatures. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Jerry. All right, uh, next up is Kathy Huffman. And then after Kathy is William Rickards, Rickards. So Kathy, we're gonna unmute you first, and then we'll go to William next. Kathy, you're unmuted on our end now. You can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, sounds good.
My name is Kathy Huffman. I am a wildlife biologist, currently retired from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I'm also a concerned landowner in Geneva Township. Wetlands, especially forested seasonal vernal pools, are a mosaic landscape across Midland County with very few intact wildlife corridors remaining. The loss of additional wetlands within Geneva and Greendale Townships would degrade what wetland habitat remains, producing sink habitats unsuitable for sustaining wetland-dependent fauna and flora species. The proposed mitigation within the permit appears to only address emergent wetlands and the area which the poles and/or towers will occupy and not the project as a whole. Enforested seasonal vernal pool clear-cutting degrades the habitat by removing one of the key components of said habitat. The loss of trees would increase sunlight and prevent growth of shade-dependent flora, thus changing both the biotic and abiotic makeup. A proposed mitigation of emergent wetland is not a suitable replacement for forested seasonal vernal pool habitat. Assumptions were made from the very beginning, which included the absence of wetland habitats within certain properties. Although surveys were conducted later for size and scope of vernal pools, no surveys were conducted on fauna and flora species composition. How can a proper mitigation plan be developed if you do not fully understand the habitat that is being impacted? The mitigation plan calls for future mitigation without a current plan in place. My concern is who will oversee that mitigation will actually be conducted to state and federal standards. There are more suitable locations for the transmission line across the landscape, which includes open reclaimed uplands, open space, eggfields, and both current and abandoned utility easements. One of M E T C's counterclaims that hopscotching across the landscape is costly. It seems costlier to sue landowners and conduct work before the project is authorized than to make wise inventment, wise invent, environmental choices.
Yeah, probably one minute left.
Okay. How can M E T C consciously declare their company is dedicated to green energy and habitat conservation when they are actively devastating the very habitat they proclaim they are trying to save? We are not against the project as a whole, just the location of it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Kathy. All right, uh, next up is, uh, William Rickards, and then after that, Evan Travis. So William, you're unmuted on our end. Uh, you can begin when you're ready.
William Rickards, a resident of Jerome Township, Midland County. I'm opposed to allowing ITC to become anywhere near wildlife recovery. Everyone knows that bird species have declined population-wise by thirty to forty percent since nineteen seventy. Why would E G L E want to do anything to be involved with that? ITC can move their lines to the west and go around the location. Mitigation is not the answer. Created wetlands are never the same. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, William. All right, Evan Travis. Um, Evan is the last person on our list, and then after that, we will go to everyone who has their hand raised. So if you have not made a comment yet, um, feel free to raise your hand in Zoom using the raise hand icon. Um, or if you're on the phone, select pound two on your receiver. Uh, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we can start calling on raised hands. Evan, feel free to go when you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Evan Travis. I am, uh, an alum of CMU, and I spent a lot of time, uh, volunteering at the WRA, interning there. Um, and I, uh, I believe it's an amazing educational resource, and it has my full support in their uh, fight against this development. Um, and then as, as a CMU alum, I, and having spent so many, uh, two summers there, um, I learned about the amazing species that the W R A, uh, works tirelessly to rehabilitate in a natural environment. Uh, the destruction of this environment would represent a profound loss to the community, both in terms of ecological and educational value. I know, um, that I helped out, uh, with several of their presentations to, uh, youth-based groups um, to introduce them and educate them about, uh, raptors and birds and, uh, natural resources generally. And we would not be able to have those types of programs that are so valuable, not only to the local communities, but the communities that we've been able to reach. Uh, far and wide across the state of Michigan. And the, the, the net land needs to stay as natural as possible in order to maintain that educational value. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Evan. All right, um, and again, that is everybody who's on my list at this point. Uh, if you have not made a comment yet, uh, please raise your hand in Zoom. Uh, if you're on, on the, on the internet with us, if you're on the phone, please pla, press pound two, and we will call on you. It looks like I have two of a phone and caller, two, six, four, six. We're gonna unmute you on our end. Um,
Oh, can you hear?
Yeah, there, there's an echo. It sounds like you might have to turn off something in the background, but we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, how does this sound?
Oh, that's better.
Better? Okay, um, we're sorry, we couldn't connect with the Zoom. We tried to. This is Barb Rogers, manager of Wildlife Recovery Association. Everything okay?
Yep, sounds good. Go ahead, Barb.
I'm sorry, what?
Yep, sounds good. You can go ahead, Barb.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first, a little background, for over fifty years, we have protected a wetland that is three hundred to four hundred acres, owned in part by Wildlife Recovery Association, the Rogers family, Knott family, and DNR State of Michigan. This is a long-established natural wetland that was probably formed when the glaciers receded. There have never been power lines on this wetland. It is a protected wetland, and to place power lines on this wetland would be damaging the wetland. That is against the law. Um, the impact would be great, even though the power lines aren't on the entire wetland, it would impact that entire wetland. There are several alternate routes that would cause far less damage. Attempts to recreate wetlands to produce the diversity of life that is found in a natural wetland have failed to produce a quality wetland. It would take fifty to a hundred years to recreate a high-quality wetland. The route planned by M E T C would cut this wetland into with high-voltage transmission lines, killing many birds that would attempt to cross where the transmission lines would be. The construction and installation of poles would destroy habitat for rare turtles, rare nesting birds, and other wildlife. The maintenance of easement would likely bring in invasive plant species and be an avenue for feral and roaming cats, raccoons, and other predators that decimate rare nesting birds and turtles. Residue from the cement used in both during construction and for many years afterward would leach into the soil, causing pollution of the whole wetland. Any chemical used to restrict growth of vegetation would harm the entire wetland. To damage a wetland is against the law. M E T C is not above the law. Um, the wetland is used to mentor university biology students as to the value of high-quality habitat and how to manage and protect that habitat. Over a hundred and forty species of birds have been identified that use this wetland for nesting or as a migratory stopover. This wetland is a nesting area for two species listed on the endangered species list, Lee's bed and red-shoed hawk. Two others may nest here, trumpeter swan and peregrine falcon. This wetland is a nesting area for thirteen species that are of special concern, including bald eagles, black-billed cuckoos, and red-headed woodpeckers. Many Blanding's turtles of Michigan, special concern, are found right under the proposed transmission line area. Wood turtles live directly under and near the proposed transmission line area. Wood turtles have been proposed for Michigan Endangered Species List. Our counts in the evenings and fall show that eight hundred to twelve hundred birds cross the proposed transmission line area as the sun sets, when the lighting is dimmed, they will not see the line markers or bird diverters. Okay, to place high-voltage transmission lines is in an area of great concentration of birds such as a wetland. One Montana wetland, several thousand birds were killed by transmission lines in one year. And it, another in an area where birds nest and raise young, or in an area where birds fly from one type of wetland to another, such as from a nesting area to a foraging area. The worst case is when power lines cross the middle of a wetland, disrupting long-established flyways. And that is ex, exactly what is, uh, proposed here. There are several other low There are several other low impact routes available, including an unused power line and right of way just to the west of Coleman Road. American National Standards Institute states clearly that power lines should not be placed in wetlands. So I thank you for your time. I know I'm really repeating what many others have said, and I appreciate all their input. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment.
We have Brian Knapp on the same phone.
All right, yep, okay, go ahead and start your comment then. Are you there? Is there someone on the same phone?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, my name's Brian Knapp. I'm a Greendale Township board member. And I've got a couple township questions. So the first thing is there's a scheduled big natural gas pipeline on the south end of this transmission line scheduled to go in. And in our township, we have no fire department. Also, there's an old three inch oil line from way back, from Pure Oil Company that's still on the ground that crosses the swamp. And it goes underneath of this easement, and we don't know if it's still got oil in it or not. I've heard several people talk about the old electrical transmission line easement that runs from M twenty to Salt River Road and also on the north side of M twenty. I had a drone fly over and take pictures. It's still cleared. And it goes through very little wetlands. Most of it is all high ground. It goes over no standing water. This wetland is one of the biggest wetlands in Midland County, as others have said. There's millions of birds that use it on a daily basis and a lot of rare ones. The Greendale Township Board should have a say about our wetlands. It's in our ordinance that nobody's ever asked. Water is one of the most important items in a wetland. Why should it be allowed to be contaminated? Here's my wife, Deanna.
Hi, this is Deanna Knapp. I have, I just wanted to say that we've owned two hundred and forty acres on Coleman Road for thirty six years. We have fought oil companies who have left abandoned wells improperly sealed and leaking and contaminating our property. We've engaged you, E G L E, to help us monitor while they tapped and cleaned up several wells on our property. We felt like we have fought to protect the property that is adjacent to the flood. And it supports all of the wildlife that uses the flooding as their food source. The main thing that I have read is that eagles, and not many people can say they have a pair of eagles that are on their property, that we've done very, we have done a lot to protect, and so that they were not disturbed and have seen a lot of, a lot of fletches every year. But we, we see when we go to work and drive down Coleman Road, the eagles perch right on the trees along Coleman Road, because that's their main hunting ground. They look over Coleman Road to the flooding, to the, both sides to look for roadkill, to look for fish. And I've even got a picture in the spring with one of the eagles sitting right next to the road in, in the water with a fish in his hand. It's just the opportunity to ruin this is not worth what, what this county deserves, because we've all protected those eagles when we have an abandoned easement a half a mile that is not in their main hunting ground. I want to thank you for having us and for listening to us. And I'd like to say please deny their application and ask them to reroute it. We understand that electricity is important, and we support the green. But it is not at the cost of a very well seasoned wetland. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your.
Uh, we have one more.
Okay, yep, and begin when you're ready.
Yeah, this is Bill Alba. I live next to the wildlife sanctuary. Um, my first question is these multi-billion dollar companies, they just think they could come into any township and run over us. I don't know why they can't approach the board. And we could have a meeting about this, and we could tell them. They must not have knew about their right of way to the west of Oil City, when we could have had a meeting about this and told them about it, tried to help them out. We all know we need the electricity. We're not saying we don't need it. We're just asking to maybe pick a better path to take it down. Barb and Joe, they spent sixty years there. They're smart people. I mean, they're very smart people. They could have made a ton of money, but they didn't care about money. They wanted the wetlands, and they've done a very good job protecting it. I know a lot of college kids that's gone out there. It is just a shame something like this can come in and take over. I also do excavating work, and I've been caught in wetlands before. They've red tagged my equipment. I can't move it for two weeks after they caught me. I didn't know I was in wetland, but I was. These guys here get caught in wetlands, and they just keep putting on working. And I don't see no silt fence by the wetlands like I have to do. So I'm just a peon, I know compared to ITC, but I don't care how much money a person has or don't have. Everyone should get treated equally. And I really appreciate you guys having this meeting with us. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment. Is there anybody else on the line? Or is it the last, last one on this line? All right. All right, so I've got another raised hand on the phone. Last four digits, the number ending in four, five, one, four. So it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Tom Stewart. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Over the years, the Rogers, excuse me, I got a little bit of a cold. Over the years, the Rogers have become a cherished treasure here in mid Michigan. That wetland is the life force that has allowed them to do their wildlife recovery work. From rehabilitating bald eagles, excuse me, and peregrine falcons, helping to bring them back from the brink of extinction, excuse me, to classroom presentation of injured birds of prey. It has been that wetland that has provided the sanctuary for them to do their work. To negatively impact that land anyway is really unthinkable. I think the former speakers have demonstrated that. An alternative route is definitely a reasonable solution. Thousands and thousands of schoolchildren here in, in mid Michigan have benefited tremendously from the wildlife presentations which the Rogers give every year. For many, the presentations have literally been a life changing experience. This is certainly true of the presentations that they have done in our Amish community here in Clare County. As Michiganders, we, we should be helping the Rogers to continue their very important life's work instead of destroying it with the power line. I urge you to deny the permit to allow this power line to go through their wetland. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, are there any other raised hands? That's the one, only one, last one I have right now, and I'll give a couple more seconds here. While I'm doing that, I just want to let you know where we're heading next. We have, I'm gonna go through those other ways to make a comment in case you think of something later or like to provide follow up comments. And then we'll provide you with some contact information after we close out this part of the hearing. But I'm still not seeing any other raised hands for people who haven't made a comment yet. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next part of the hearing. And so Brian, I'd like to invite you to read the closing statement tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. One second here, please. I'd like to thank you all for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project, and that you were willing to take the time to be here with us tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until December eleventh. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. If you do still wish to provide written comments, you may do so either through the My Enviro Portal, by email, or again by US Mail. This hearing is now closed. Thank you again, and I'll turn it back to Ryan.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Yeah, I just want to mention those other ways to submit a comment. Brian went over them, but just to reiterate, so you should see the link to My Enviro Portal. That's in the chat, submission H P H S R N five V P N P S. And then I'm gonna read this mailing address off again for the benefit of the people who can't see it in front of them who are on the phone. You can submit comments by mail to E G L E Water Resources Division, Bay City District Office, four zero one Ketchum Street, and that's spelled K E T C H U M Street, Suite B, Bay City, Michigan, four eight seven zero eight. And again, comment period is open for ten days until December eleventh. All right, if you have questions from our Eagle staff or for Eagle staff, you can contact Jacob Brand. His phone number is nine eight nine three five five three five two two. And email address is brand J at michigan.gov, and that's spelled B R A N D J at M I C H I G A N dot gov. Or Brian Rudolph, the Bay City District Supervisor, phone number is nine eight nine four three nine six zero six five. Email address is rudolph B one at michigan.gov, and that's spelled R U D O L P H B one as, as in the number one at M I C H I G A N dot gov. And with that, and I'll leave this up for another second, I just wondering, Brian, do you have any closing comments for us tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time out of your schedule to join with us tonight in this hearing. We really do appreciate your willingness to provide comments. They assist us in our review. Your willingness to be a part of the project is, is important and valued to us, and we take it very seriously. So again, I thank you, and we appreciate all your participation.
All right, yeah, thank you, Brian. Yeah, thanks for all of our Eagle staff who are on the line tonight and to all of you for making those great comments. Again, just to again repeat that the recording of this public hearing will be on our YouTube channel here in a couple days, and it will be closed captioned. So with that, I hope you all have a great rest of your night. Thank you.